Hello, guys.
Evan.
All right, how you doing? Looks like we're just waiting on Yolanda. Otherwise, everyone's here, so hello.
Nobody else is aligned.
We'll head and start the webinar.
Yeah, I can't change my name, so you have you have two Matthews tonight, I guess.
I can see if I can change it.
Do you want me to be Jim?
Should be good now, Jim.
Thanks, Isaiah. Much appreciated.
All right, looks like we're all here and at six o'clock, so Madam Chair, whenever you want to start, it's all you.
Good evening, everyone calling together tonight's planning board meeting for Wednesday, November 5th, 2025. Start with roll call. Marty Crowell.
Yeah.
Matthew Gallagher.
Yeah.
James Sweeney.
Here.
Yolanda Spinola.
Here.
Tony Gonzalez present. We have one item being added this evening, 7:37 Warren Ave. What is this exactly, Evan?
So, um, you guys saw this as a definitive subdivision a few months back where they split off a piece of this for a new lot on Packard Way. Uh, this is just the rest of that piece of property being reconfigured with the existing parcel, uh, with the business already on it. Uh, it's going to be basically, it's going to be, uh, two lots. Actually, you know what? I can share this real quick if you'd like. And show you guys what this is. There you go. Okay, so they're just reconfiguring, um, the bottom half into lot B2, B3. Uh, the existing business is going to be on the corner there of Warren and Myrtle, and then parcel B1 is eventually going to be conveyed to the property owner just to the south of there. Um, this is actually, all the roads are built already and everything meets frontage, so it's actually, um, doesn't meet the definition of a subdivision, so it should be fine to go forward, uh, as an A and R.
Just, uh, a question, Madam Chair, if I can. Uh, you're on mute. I'm assuming you're saying that's all right?
Yeah, I'm on mute. Yes.
So I just wonder why we're, i- is this the first everyone seeing of this? Because I didn't, I didn't see this.
This was, this was just filed a couple of days ago. Um, like I said, this is, this is not a full definitive subdivision like you usually see. These usually just come through, this, this is when they meet frontage and don't need to build roads. It doesn't need to go through the normal subdivision process, and it doesn't actually need planning board approval. Basically, what we're doing here or what you guys are doing is just verifying, kind of confirming that this doesn't need to go through the whole subdivision process. And, uh, I can explain that further if you'd like, Jim.
Yeah, I was just, you know, wondering if we needed to further investigation for any kind of questioning, that's all.
So what, what you're looking for here, basically, um, what triggers it to be a subdivision is if, uh, any of the created lots don't meet frontage requirements for the underlying zoning. If any roads or streets need to be constructed to access the lots, or if any utilities need to be extended to the lot. Now, because all of these roads are already existing and constructed out, uh, and this lot is already currently, it's, it's, well, it's too, so can you guys see my cursor at all?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so this right here is an existing business. Uh, it's on its own lot, and the rest of it used to be here and then up here. This was already split off. And over here, they're just reconfiguring the lot lines. So because it doesn't trip any, any of those, um, triggers, it, it doesn't need planning board approval. So like, um, right here, this is the R2 zone. This, this lot B2 is in R2. That requires 100 feet of frontage to conform to zoning, which is what, what it has. Lot B3 is a C2 zone, which doesn't have frontage requirements. So, and then parcel B1 is not a buildable lot, says right here, so it doesn't need to worry about that. It's just a parcel that's going to be conveyed to this right here. So because all of those, you know, are, is the way it is, it doesn't meet the legal definition of a subdivision, meaning it doesn't need to go through the whole process.
So you said the lot lines changed. When were they changed? And I would assume it would need, that would need approval, correct?
It hasn't changed yet. This is basically the, what they are intending to change it to. And it, it doesn't need the approval because again, uh, the roads are constructed, you're not extending utilities, and it meets frontage. So as long as those things aren't being affected, they're, they can kind of move lot lines however they want.
Okay, all right.
So, Madam Chair, could I ask?
Marty, go ahead. You're on mute, Marty. Did you mind asking something?
My question is, if, if they don't need our approval, why is it before us? Dumb question.
No, basically what they're doing is they want to send this to the board, just so the board can look at it and kind of confirm that, yes, we don't need to approve this. It's just, they honestly don't need, need to come to the planning board. It's just another redundant sec- like, uh, security, basically.
No, no one ever does this, Evan. They go the other, the other way.
Uh, they do it when they can, but most of the subdivisions that the board will see, usually, you know, when you need to get frontage waivers and all that, because it doesn't meet those frontages, it has to go through the whole process. If you guys remember last month, you, uh, you, you guys did this for the soccer field when, uh, the city solicitor was here and explaining that they were just shuffling around some lot lines within, within the, uh, all the existing parcels already. And, um, you guys wanted to say, yes, that's, that's fine.
All right, I do, I do remember that. Okay, thank you.
So we don't need to vote on this. We just need to, to have heard it and.
Uh, so you'll, you'll still, you'll still want to vote on it, and the vote is basically that you are certifying that it's not a legal subdivision. It doesn't need the approval of the board.
All right, so I saw move that.
Uh, if that's a motion, I'll, I'll second.
That's a motion.
All right, roll call. James?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Yolando?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tony, yes. All right, thank you. Uh, we need to review and accept last month's meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept. Second.
Okay, roll call. James?
Yes.
Yolando?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tony, yes. All right, now who do we have for our five senior residential zoning math amendment?
Let's see. Oh, let me stop sharing. Hold on. All right, somebody, it looks like we have Attorney Burke. I will move him over.
Madam Chair, could I interrupt for a second?
Sure.
The alarm in my building is going off and there's fire engines there. I think I better get out.
Okay.
Okay, goodbye.
That's a good idea, Marty. Thank you.
Bye.
So what is it we're doing with this one? We're voting to, to amend?
Well, the, uh, it looks like Attorney Burke's here, so, um.
I'm, I'm sorry, I apologize. I, I was, I was pushing too many buttons, which is typical of my technical skills. Uh, if I may, Madam Chairwoman, uh, this matter is, is something you've already had before you. Uh, it's the Senior Housing Ordinance. Uh, in fact, uh, you, you voted, uh, or gave it a recommendation. Are we there?
We can hear you. Yep.
Yeah, okay, I, I, all right. Uh, and, uh, in fact, uh, the, uh, matter got brought before the City Council, uh, for final approval. Uh, it got to the discussion phase, and it was decided that the original ordinance was meant to cover a much larger area. Uh, members of the City Council decided that they wanted, at least at this point in time, reduce the map coverage that would be part of the ordinance to essentially, uh, two parcels. Uh, one off Thatcher Street, uh, which, uh, is next to, uh, the, uh, convent, and, uh, and the other one is up on North Quincy Street. Because it was an amendment, it was deemed by Attorney Resnick, uh, for the council that it needed to go back to the planning board for one more hearing. So they, they have, in fact, passed the ordinance. They need to now confirm the map. And it's my understanding, it's going before the City Council for approval on the 27th of November.
Okay.
The 27th of November?
Yes, 27th of November. Uh, all that's left is they needed to meet the statutory requirement by having another public hearing with the planning board.
The 27th of November is Thanksgiving.
Uh, well, then it's, it's the, the second meeting, uh, in November, I'm sorry, of the, uh, of the, uh, council.
Okay.
Uh, questions for the planning board?
I, I guess my, my only question, uh, is this is just a meeting for satisfaction for formal procedure?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve. Uh, second, both motion in favor?
To recommend favorably, yes.
Yes, I motion to recommend favorably. Second.
Okay, uh, roll call. Matthew?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Yolando?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Uh, next we have up 40, our site plan review for 28 Frederick Douglass Avenue. And we have Neighbor, Neighbor Works Housing Solutions, Inc. as representative.
And everyone who will be part of this presentation, please raise your hand. And attendees, and I will move you over to panelists. Oh my God, there's a lot. Oh my goodness, okay, hold on. Try and get to you all here. All right, I think I got everybody, but anyone's missing, just let me know and we will find them.
Anybody else comes, I'll try to move them over to.
Awesome.
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members. My name's Rob Corley, and I'm the CEO of Neighbor Works Housing Solutions, and, uh, just want to make sure we can get our deck up.
Yep, let me just. Oh, I'm sending our request, Evan, to share.
You should be good, Jim.
Okay, great.
And that was Tim Dougherty, our Real Estate Development Director, uh, from Neighbor Works as well. Um, so, uh, appreciate the opportunity to, uh, talk to you tonight about the historic Grayson Hotel, uh, on Frederick Douglass Ave, uh, just around the corner from Main Street. Um, and diagonally across from, uh, our offices, uh, on Legion Parkway, the Harbor One Bank Branch. Um, so I thought before we got into the Grayson that I'd just talked to you a little bit about Neighbor Works, uh, Housing Solutions and what we do and have been doing. Um, we're a community development corporation, um, a 501(c)(3) that's been operating in Brockton for over 15 years. Um, we also are in a variety of other cities, uh, across the region, uh, but Brockton is our largest, uh, office location. Um, and we provide a variety of services. We have 150 employees. Um, and we provide, uh, housing solutions, we like to call them, uh, or housing services in the region, uh, in particular in Brockton. And, um, we uh, on top of real estate development, a lot of those services include, uh, assisting people with, um, down payment assistance, buying their first home, foreclosure counseling, um, rent relief, utility relief, um, second mortgage lending, and so on and so forth. Typically, we see anywhere from 20 to 25,000 households a year that come through our office. Um, but our real estate development portfolio that you see here in front of you, uh, we have currently over about 1,200 units. Um, and about 460 in the pipeline. Um, and I'd like to talk to you about those developments, uh, that we have, uh, here briefly, if I could, in particular, the ones that are in Brockton. Um, so our work in Brockton, you see here a picture of 121 Main, the Sycamore on Main. Um, and here are four developments that we picked out here to show you. Sycamore Main being on top. Uh, that was a $113 million development, uh, the Grayson, which we're going to talk to you about now. Uh, the Lincoln School, um, and our project that we call Camp, uh, Campello, which is over Montello. So, Tim, if you flip?
Yeah, and just to clarify, these four projects are 113 million, not Sycamore Main, but I can see where that would be.
Thank you. There's one restaurant, too, which is about to reopen.
That's right.
Um, the Lincoln School, uh, if you're not familiar, uh, is not far from the site, actually, just outside of downtown. Um, it's a former school, a historic building, uh, similar to the Grayson Hotel, uh, that we renovated, uh, just opened in the summer. Beautiful, beautiful building. Um, it's now, uh, home to 37, uh, seniors that are living there. This is senior affordable housing. Um, and it was an award winner, actually, uh, this year. It, it won the People's, uh, Preservation Choice Award, um, this past, uh, summer. So we're very, very proud of this, uh, development and flipped him. Uh, currently under construction is 1,200 Montello. Uh, it's over by Keith Park. Um, beautiful building, uh, 94 units of mixed income housing, again, ground floor retail here, similar to, uh, 121 Main. Um, over by, uh, the train station. So this is currently under construction. We expect this to be complete. I would say maybe this time next year.
Yeah.
And the Sycamore Main, and here in the back, you can see where the Grayson Hotel is in relation to the Sycamore Main. Um, and, uh, this is, of course, uh, where Brockton Beer was, uh, 121 Main Street. Beautiful building. Uh, to get some idea of proximity here, uh, you see the Grayson Hotel in the black, uh, uh, little note there. Um, across, diagonally crosses where our offices are, um, uh, on fronting Legion Parkway and on, uh, ru- on the rear to Frederick Douglass. You see the Sycamore Main that butts right up against the Grayson, um, and City Hall, and you're familiar, of course, with the rest. Uh, brief history on the Hotel Grayson, uh, was constructed in 1907. It is historic. Um, and it was originally called the Walton. Uh, I didn't know that until just recently. Um, but it became the Hotel Grayson in 1911. Um, and has been, uh, a hotel or in some sort of use for quite some time into the 50s and 60s. Um, with a variety of different, um, uh, things going on there, uh, in- including the, the, being referred to as the slickest in Brockton. Um, and a variety of other things, but, uh, uh, not so much these days, so I'll, I'll flip, flip this to him. Uh, this is sort of the, this is the current condition of the Grayson Hotel and a little bit of a, a history here. It's been vacant for the last 20 years. Um, the city acquired, uh, the Grayson through tax title in 2015. The city deeded it to the BRA in 2019. Um, and Neighbor Works purchased it off the BRA in 2022. And we've been sort of the steward of the property since then, and because it's historic, uh, we've been able to, uh, accumulate historic tax credits, which are helping with this renovation over this period of time. And when we, we got it, it was this purple picture on the left. Uh, and since acquiring it, we've, uh, muraled up the two boarded up storefronts to try to beautify the building. Um, we, we have it lit up always at night, like you see here. This isn't a rendering. This is actual, uh, real lights, uh, in that photo. Um, and then we recently completed all the exterior masonry work, uh, on the building to sort of bring back that masonry. And we've been maintaining some, um, we've done some roof repairs and been maintaining, stopping leaking and things like that to keep, uh, try to keep the building in good shape, uh, for its future renovation. And now I'm going to turn it over to Tim, Tim Dougherty, our Real Estate Development Director, who's going to go through the program, uh, for uh, this beautiful historic property, uh, coming back to life for real.
Thanks, Rob, and thanks, members of the board, for having us tonight. Um, so, yeah, so what we're here for tonight is, uh, requesting an approval of our 40R on this multifamily project, which is located in the Arts and Cultural Subdistrict of the downtown Brockton Smart Growth Overly District. The project's a historic renovation and an adaptive reuse of the former Hotel Grayson. Uh, the program that we're proposing is 19 residential units and residential amenities space on the ground floor and second floors. The applicant for the permit is Neighbor Works Housing Solutions. Uh, the proposed program is as follows. Uh, the site itself, as, as most of you guys probably are familiar, it's a postage stamp of a site. It's about 5,600 square feet or 0.13 acres. You can see that the building on the site plan is essentially built lot line to lot line to lot line to lot line. Um, our, our proposal is for 19 units, which includes eight studios, 10 one bedrooms, and one two bedroom unit. Um, each floor plate is about a little over 5,000 square feet. It's a three-story building. Um, currently, it's a vacant historic property. Um, we're going to be utilizing re- rehabilitation historic tax credits, uh, to help finance the, the project. Um, two noteworthy sort of, uh, construction items associated with the building is that we're going to be installing an elevator and installing a new egress, uh, egress stairwell, uh, to serve the upper floors of the building, uh, per, per code. Um, upon its completion, the 19 units plus the 48 units that we currently manage at Sycamore Main will be managed sort of collectively as a single property. Um, and then we're, we're adding new ground floor amenities space to the Grayson, which will be usable not only for the Grayson residents, but also our current residents of Sycamore on Main, who have no, uh, community amenities space at Sycamore now. So this is a quick summary, floor by floor of, of the program. Uh, like I mentioned, it's about 5,000 square feet per floor. You can see here, uh, at the top of the screen would be sort of how the building fronts on Frederick Douglass. So on the ground floor, the first floor, we'll have lobby space facing the front. And that amenities space that I mentioned, which will have like a full kitchen and a lounge area, so sort of activating the street front um, with more public space as we're opening up the historic storefronts, um, related to, uh, that existed at the Grayson. And then there are three residential units in the back on the ground floor. And then on the second floor, we have eight more residential units, all sort of around what is a historic sort of central double height parlor that, uh, used to serve the hotel. And then on the third floor, it's another eight units for a total of 19. This is, uh, a rendering of, of the, of the front of the building, looking at it from Frederick Douglass, uh, so looking, looking south at the north elevation. Um, I, I, I'd invite our architects here, um, Katie and Nick. I, do you guys want to chime in on some of the stuff that we're doing to the exterior of the building?
Sure, happy to, Tim. Yeah, I think, you know, the the nature of the renovation in the exterior is really about, you know, maintaining and enhancing all of the historic qualities of the building. So we've been working um, with VHB, who's our consultant for the historic tax credits, to make sure that, you know, all of the very specific details for windows and, and the moldings and the various sort of, uh, profiles in the building that we need to recreate and maintain are getting done with historic consistency. At the same time, we're trying to, you know, elevate, um, the building envelope as much as possible to, you know, to modern standards. So we're upgrading the windows. Um, we're adding insulation inside the walls. Um, and, you know, really, the, the main gesture about, you know, the front of the building here is about recreating that historic storefront, which you saw had been, you know, boarded up in some of the earlier views. So as Tim said, a lot of the masonry work has already been completed, and the next phase of the renovation will be about, you know, the openings and the storefront and, um, and the interior work. Um, at the back of the building, we've got the new elevator shaft that you see there, and then the, um, exterior egress stairs, um, which are architecturally meant to be very different from the historic building. That's one of the requirements of, you know, the historic tax credits, is they want to see a very clear delineation between the historic building and contemporary additions. So we've designed it to be complimentary, but, but different, uh, from the historic building. Uh, and I think we just had a few views here of some of the proposed exterior lighting, similar strategies. We were also the architects on, on Sycamore on Main and, uh, worked with uh, the board and, and the planning department, um, on the architectural lighting strategy there. So, um, both up and down lighting here that incorporates into the, um, the architectural moldings around the front of the building, and then a little bit more of sort of, um, security perimeter lighting around L Street and in the back of the site as well.
Yeah.
Yep, and that, yeah, a view of the, the illumination. Yep, and that, yeah, a view of the, the illumination of the stairs at night.
Yeah, I just point out here, we, we feel like the lighting is important for a couple of reasons. One, of course, it's a beautiful building in downtown Brockton. We want to light it up and everybody see it at night. Second is that that lighting really sort of lends itself to supporting a safer feel and safer environment on the sidewalks around the neighborhood. We felt that way about Sycamore, which is well-lit at night. Um, and so that, that, that's an important important thing that we're trying to accomplish with this lighting. So this is a ground floor sort of zoomed in. Like I mentioned, we have sort of fronting on Frederick Douglass, more of the public space. Um, here's our kitchen with a little island here. It's a good space, given that the units are going to be relatively small for people to gather if they, uh, if they have people over, if, uh, folks at Sycamore wanted to, you know, have a birthday party or we have a lot of kids living in Sycamore, um, this space would be, uh, there to serve them as well. Um, and then over on the left side, it's more of a seating area, sort of front lobby. But again, it activates sort of the storefront feel of Frederick Douglass, um, with the residential units, uh, pushed to the back. Um, the, the ceiling heights in this building are, are really soaring. Um, in particular on the ground floor, I think that these are, I think, maybe eleven or twelve feet. So the units, um, while maybe small, um, from a square footage perspective, the windows are really big and gracious and, um, the, the units are really going to feel, feel good, feel nice. Um, the second floor, uh, is the historic sort of circulation pattern of the hotel is what we've followed. So historically, there are approximately like thirty-five rooms in this hotel. We're going to nineteen units. So rule of thumb here is essentially for every two hotel rooms, we've created one residential unit. We've kept the circulation the same as it was in the historic Grayson. So on the second floor, everything centered around sort of this parlor area, which has a fireplace right here, which you're seeing here in the picture historically. And then it's double height all the way to the roof. And there's a really large skylight that we're going to be bringing back to life. So I'm, I'm super excited about what this room's going to look like when it's done. Um, but that's what it did look like when it was an active hotel. And then up on the third floor, it's essentially the same as the second floor, like I mentioned. Um, there's a void. So if you're on the third floor hallway, you'd be able to look down into that second floor parlor. On each of the second and third floors, there is a laundry room for residents. And then like we mentioned, the elevators is, is at the back of the building along with that secondary means of egress. Um, the, the primary stair is here, uh, fo- um, access from the center entrance, and it's really a beautiful staircase. Um, so the building's going to look great upon completion. So, yeah, just a reiteration here. It's, it, like I said, it's about a fifteen thousand square foot building. Nineteen units, eight studios, ten one bedrooms, two two-bedrooms. Um, adding an elevator and adding a secondary means of egress at the back of the building. Now, in order to, to complete this project and sort of bring it to fruition, um, with our forty R application, we are seeking required waivers from some stuff because generally speaking, this is an existing building that's already built. Um, and it's a known non-conforming use as it is. So in total, there are twelve waivers. One is a waiver from, uh, the actual ordinance and then the other eleven are from the design guidelines, uh, in that two thousand and seven document. Um, but the first waiver and probably the most noteworthy one is we don't have any onsite parking. So like I mentioned, the, the building is lot line to lot line, takes up the whole site. We don't have any space to put any onsite parking. Um, we do, however, have ample parking next door at Sycamore and Main. And so the zoning requirement, uh, would be zero point eight spaces, uh, per unit. So that would come out to sixteen spaces for our nineteen units. In the case of the Grayson Hotel, which is a very similar, uh, income mix as what we're proposing for the Grayson. Um, what we have are forty-eight units and twenty-eight cars. This is a private that's been operating for three years. So we have really good data on what our real demand is for parking. Um, so it works out on the whole to zero point five eight spaces per unit at Sycamore and Main. All right, I just want to note that for our one-bedroom units at, at Sycamore, uh, of which there are twenty, the demand is actually only zero point four spaces or zero point four cars per unit. And then for the two beds, it's zero point six seven. And then for the three beds, it's a little bit bigger. So if we apply that math to, uh, the Grayson Hotel, it's nineteen units of which there are eight studios, ten one-beds and two two-beds, our, our, we're coming out to about seven point eight seven spaces of real demand for the building. We round that up to about eight or nine spaces. Um, so we have over at Sycamore twenty excess spaces now. So in reality, we can probably accommodate all the additional parking demand related to the Grayson right next door at the Sycamore. Um, but in addition to that, we did, uh, secure an agreement with the Brockton Parking Authority to reserve nineteen spaces for us off-site at their Lincoln Street Lot, um, which is a one-to-one. I think practically speaking, um, the new residents of the Grayson probably will be able to park at Sycamore and Main in our garage right next door and it'll all work very well. Uh, but we do have sort of in our back pocket, the, um, the parking agreement reservation from the parking authority at Lincoln. So that's sort of the parking. We, 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 so we, we do require, although we think we can so- accommodate and meet the demand for parking at the Grayson, we would require a waiver for that onsite parking per the letter of the law. Um, and then in addition, there's eleven other waivers related to sort of the dimensional things that we don't have any control over, given that this is a historic renovation. Um, we don't have any setbacks, so, uh, we're built to the lot line, so we don't satisfy sort of the setback requirements. We don't set, um, we don't satisfy the open space ratio, um, as we take up the entire site. Um, there's a requirement in the design guidelines that the ground floor residential be raised three feet above at grade. We can't do that because we, uh, our grade exists as it is. Um, we will be, uh, creating privacy for those three ground floor units with window treatments, uh, at those units. Um, and then last, the last one down here is providing street trees. And although we actually would love to provide, plant some street trees on this at, at the Grayson, the sidewalks are too narrow. They're about seven feet wide at, um, Frederick Douglass and about five feet, five inches at L Street. So I, I think it's the case that we're, we're not able to plant street trees around the Grayson. And it was similar, it was a similar situation with Sycamore and Main, where we were able to plant street trees at Main Street, but around the frontage on, on Frederick Douglass, we just couldn't fit the trees. So those are the waivers. Um, that's our presentation and I, I think maybe we can just open it up to Q and A if, if everybody's okay with it.
Oh, thank you. I think you did a, uh, very thorough job and started answering my questions before I could ask. So I do not have any questions. Other board members?
Thanks, Jim. Um, so with regards to the parking, how far is Lincoln Street from the, the hotel?
Yeah, it's a couple of blocks. Let me bring it up. So the hotel is here. And you'd walk down Frederick Douglass and you can then cross and walk down School Street and the lot, the Lincoln's, Lincoln Street Lot is right here.
Okay, so it's a bit away.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. And then how big are each of the units? So you have studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms.
They're small units. Good question. Um, so the, they're, they're small. So the studio is average about three hundred and fourteen square feet. The one bedroom's average about four hundred square feet. And then the two-bedroom is eight hundred and fifty square feet. So it's a, for a two-bedroom, it's traditional size, but the one-bedroom are on the smaller side. And sort of from a marketing perspective, we're thinking about the one-bedrooms as studios as well, really. So I think the studios and the one-bedrooms, we envision renting for about fifteen hundred dollars a month. Um, which is a good deal. I think one-bedrooms in downtown Brockton right now are going for like nineteen hundred or thereabouts. So um, we'll be a little bit smaller. We'll be, I think the units will be beautiful, but it'll be a good deal, I think, given, you know, they're a little bit smaller than maybe the five hundred to six hundred square foot units that you typically might see in downtown Brockton.
Got it. Yeah, I think that's a very fair price, with any utilities being included.
At the moment, we're including the utilities, um, in that fifteen hundred number, where, but we add, we're not, we're thinking, we're thinking about it. In the case, if, if we do not include the utilities, we'll probably have to adjust the rent downward a little bit as an offset.
Okay, thanks so much. Those are all my questions.
All right, James, you had a question?
Uh, sure, I've got a few. Um, first, I just want to say the lighting on the building is outstanding. So I just want to say that right off the, the bat. As far as the, um, waiver for the trees, how many trees were supposed to be planted?
Good question. I think they're supposed to be planted at not at forty-foot increments.
I was going to say thirty, but, yeah.
Yeah, um, I can look right now. But, um, so if it's forty-foot increments, it'd probably be one tree on either, like a tree on Frederick Douglass and a tree on L Street would be my guess.
Maybe you could share, you could share that existing street photo, not the most attractive photo, but that would show the sidewalk clearly, the existing condition.
Yeah. There you go.
You can see it's very tight.
So probably three max.
Um, yeah, I, I mean, two to three max, I guess, if by linear, yes.
So I guess what I'm alluding to is instead of, you know, completely waiving it, could we have that transferred to the D P W at their discretion for the downtown? Um, that y- you folks would transfer over to them?
Uh, that'd be fine by us. And I, I also think further, and Evan, you might be able to speak to this, but I think Brock, downtown Brockton's eligible for free tree planting by the state.
They, they are completely out of trees and I have been working tirelessly with D P W to get street trees, uh, in the downtown. So, you know, we'll take two or three trees if it can be from this project to, um, I would say, uh, whoever's discretion, but somewhere in the down, some other place in the downtown.
Happy, happy to do it, James.
Okay, and, uh, so that's one. And two, this is a, already an existing building. So it's kind of hard for, I know it's kind of hard for me to wrap my brain around, you know, this without actually being there. Before site plan approval, is there any, could there be a tour for the planning board prior to that? So that we can actually put our eyes on. I mean, the pictures look great. I don't know if any of us have been in the building.
Um, this is the building that the, uh, the, um, Liberty Tree was found in, if you remember.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm familiar with the history. I'm just, you know, before, you know, before your next step.
We'd be happy to show you the building, um, at any time. Uh, and, uh, it is partially gutted inside, uh, so it's not that elegant inside right now. Uh, the parlor area, area is somewhat dilapidated as well. Uh, and the basement this summer, uh, we've had two issues in the basement. One, when they were doing the water mains, they flooded on us accidentally, the streetworks folks, uh, dig it there. And, uh, and then the second, um, we had a sore back up in there at one point. So, but, uh, it, truthfully, happy to show it, but I just would caution that there's not much beauty in it. Uh, except for the stairwell.
Yeah, whenever you folks would think it's a safe, uh, environment just to take a look, that, that's all really uh, to get, if there's any other things to, you know, at least put your eyes on to ask questions about, that's all.
Yep, not, not a problem.
All right, thank you. Any other board members with questions?
Madam Chair, I have a question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Um, so I'm just curious about the parking. Is the, is there, um, a fee to park for the tenants?
Yeah, I think if, if we, there would not be a fee for them to park at Sycamore. I don't, I don't think we would do that. Um, and there would be a fee for parking at Lincoln, the Lincoln Lot. Um, I think the going rate with the parking authority is fifty dollars a month for a space. So I think that that would be what the, what the, what the rate would be.
All right, the reason I ask is, uh, twenty-five East Nelson, Serenity Towers, um, I forget the name of the prior business, but when they changed their business model, the current management decided to charge tenants to park in their garage. And most nights, their garage is mostly empty. And all the neighboring side streets, the church park, the Lutheran Church parking lot, anywhere you can physically fit a vehicle at night, there's cars. Um, so there's a lot, we, we've been getting a lot of complaints through the Quality of Life Task Force regarding that area, but my concern here from a fire department standpoint is Frederick Douglass is a little tight, L Street is extremely tight.
Yeah.
If, if tenants or their guests try to dodge a parking fee, you might have a lot of curb parking that wasn't intended, and then I can't get apparatus um, to the street or, so like, I think attention's going to have to be paid moving forward. Um, that it doesn't create a parking issue and therefore a fire department access issue, um, once it's being occupied.
Yeah, we, we would share those concerns, truthfully. Um, and that we really do believe, uh, wholeheartedly that we have plenty of parking available right next door in the, in the covered garage, uh, which is free. There's no charge. We don't charge our tenants uh, in the Sycamore and Main, nor will we charge these folks. Um, we don't believe we're really going to need the Lincoln, uh, lot at all. Um, but we wanted to make sure that we had that available to present to you tonight, um, as an option or a backup option. Um, but we really don't think we're going to need it. Um, and yeah, Frederick Douglass is a, is a track meet street, one-way. Uh, it's, it's tight. It's, uh, as we saw in the picture, in rough shape, hope, about to be repaved, I believe, in a matter of days. Um, but, uh, there is some, uh, on-street parking there, uh, along opposite the, uh, the Grayson here, coming up the road that's metered. Um, uh, but besides that, it is tight. So it's our intention to have, uh, the majority or, I'm sorry, all of the people here parking at, uh, one twenty-one Main.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have one more question.
Okay.
Uh, do you have a, an existing fire suppression system within the building, or is that something that will be added?
We, we have one now and it will be all replaced and new, um, completely on the building. And we've been battling with that over the years here to keep it full of, you know, glycol and not freezing and all that stuff, uh, for fire reasons. And, um, we, uh, had problems with the alarm system in there that we inherited. We've been trying to upgrade that. We got the, um, the X on the building, uh, about three or four months ago from the fire department, um, as we're trying to make sure that it was safe. But the new building will be, uh, all modern, all sprinkled, uh, brand-new fire alarm, you know, very safe.
Not quite, not quite sure what the, the rules are for digging up the street after it's been paved. But if a new line does need to go in, that would be something to consider.
Yeah, yeah, Matthew, that, we, we've been on top of that actually, um, uh, in particular, um, uh, with D P W, uh, all along. And we feel like we're, we're in good shape there, aware of what we're proposing. They were trying to get a stub in, uh, prior to the paving. It just didn't work out. Uh, but we have access also on the L Street side. So they, they feel comfortable that they're going to be able to service the building without much trouble.
Great. Thanks for answering those questions.
Madam Chair, I just have one, uh, question, um, just in regards to one of the renderings. I've, I, I guess I just want to understand neighborhood's vision for the area. It, if they, um, because one of the renderings shows almost like there's like some type of open space or green space, looking at it, I think that's something that you all are thinking for in the future, or, uh, what is that?
Yeah, uh, that, uh, good pickup on that. That does not exist currently. Um, that is a, uh, parking lot across the street uh, where the, uh, Liberty Tree is located. And the city recently, um, had a taking of the Liberty Tree property, I believe. Just, that would be forward to the right here. You can't see it. Um, the planning department, uh, former planning director, uh, had some visions on creating a sort of a liberty or abolitionist park here, uh, in this area. Um, and so we've been using this rendering to sort of demonstrate what that might look like, uh, especially opened up to the Grayson. This, but this view Uh, especially opened up to the Grayson. This, but this view here does exist currently. It's just not beautiful with trees and grass and, and a patio, uh, but you can see the Grayson Hotel from this angle. So it's uh, it's, yeah, we, we'd love to see that happen and we'd love to uh, be part of that, but that's more on the city's planning side than on ours. And as, as um, mentioned, we're, we're in the, we're not only next to the Grayson on the left, but we're also. On the right of this image with our own uh, office building with Harbor One.
That, that's great. I mean, I, I, I love the vision and I think that's great that just communicate that out and. Uh, so that you all can partner with the city and work with folks to, um, yeah, have this vision move forward, cause I think. Green space and some open space there would be great for folks who are uh, future occupants of the building and just for Brockton in general. Thanks so much for sharing that and great job with um, all of the work that you all have done so far.
Yes, Yolando, if I may, um, so I imagine you might have heard Rob speak about uh, the green links that he was envisioning. This is one of said, those seven links.
Great, thanks, John. Yeah, I would love to see all of that move forward. It's a great vision that Rob left us with.
Agreed.
All right, um, now, public, uh, is there anyone in the public with their hand up?
Not currently, um, members of the public, if anyone would like to speak on this project, go ahead and use the, use your, uh, raise your hand icon. And we will unlock your mic to speak. Um, and I don't see any hands, Madam Chair.
I would like to actually, sorry, if I could uh, jump in here. The mayor uh, texted me earlier. Uh, with a message that he fully supports this project and wanted that entered into the minutes for this meeting, so I just. That would be remiss if I didn't mention that.
Thank you, John.
So I'll, I'll motion to approve uh, with all of the. Um, whether there are, not the requirements, but the um.
I'll bring it up, yeah.
Yeah, so with all the.
Hold on this and then we'll get to the waivers. So you're opposed to approve?
Yeah, so I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, James.
Yes.
Marty.
Yes.
ondo.
Yes.
Matthew.
Yes.
Tony, yes. Right now for the waivers, um, and also. With the condition that a, the three trees are gonna be given to Brockton to use in the downtown wherever the DPW sees fit.
Yes.
Okay, um, first.
We have to remake that motion, uh, I believe.
Sorry?
Do we have to remake that motion because we're just adding or?
I think that would be separate, right? We, we're voting separately on the uh, waivers.
The waivers are going separately, but um.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, the condition, the condition that was added.
About the trees. They agreed to it, um, so do you want us to? You vote, Isaiah, we can.
If you could, if you could, if you could, just to make it clear.
Let's add in the condition for the three trees given to Brockton to use downtown. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
All right, roll call, James.
Yes.
Matthew.
Yes.
Londo.
Yes.
Marty.
Yes.
Tony, yes. All right, now on to the waivers, uh, minimum lot area per dwelling.
So, Madam, Madam Chair, what I would do here is I would use um, the screen that Tim is sharing right now. Uh, to, so I, what you'd probably want to do is this first one here, section twenty-seven ninety-six as one. And then for the design standards, unless there's any of them in there that you guys want to look into more. Or not grant, you can probably do a waiver for the design standards as one big package. Yes, that might be the simplest way to do it, but it's, it's up to you.
You're saying do section twenty-seven through ninety-six?
So the first one here is a uh, the parking waiver. Uh, that's a, that's section twenty-seven ninety-six one of Article sixteen for off-street parking. Uh, that should be its own separate waiver. Uh, you guys should do a vote just on that. Then beyond that, oh, I can't, I can't say anything, Tim. Then the rest of them are all just design standards. Uh, over here, two through twelve, which you could do as one waiver from those uh, design standards. In this list, unless there's anything in there you don't want to waive.
All right, uh, is there a motion for off-street parking ninety-six one?
Yeah, I made that motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call, uh, Matthew.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Yolando.
Yes.
Marty.
Yes.
Tony. Yes. All right, the next piece is design standards two through twelve. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Motion of, approve.
Second.
Roll call, Yolando.
Yes.
Matthew.
Yes.
Marty.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Tony, yes. All right, thank you. All right, moving on now to definitive subdivision, Zero Bellevue Avenue. We have PMP Consulting as the representative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys.
Thank you.
We'll reach out on the tour, James.
Okay, thank you. I, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, and then anybody here for uh, Bellevue subdivision, please raise your hand and we will move you over to panelists.
And Evan, I'm gonna help with that too.
Attorney Burke, okay, you're already over here and we have Ed coming over now. Uh, if there's anyone else, just let me know and I'll get him over. Otherwise, you guys are good.
Who do we have for PMP?
Eddie Jacobs.
Oh, Eddie, okay.
How you doing? Good. Uh, Madam Chairwoman, uh, members of the planning board, if I can, uh, I represent uh, the uh. Eastern Ventures LLC and this is a uh, uh, proposed subdivision off of Bellevue Avenue in which we have two lots. Uh, that have uh, appropriate size uh, under the ordinance, but have a frontage uh, requirement. So we, we'd like the opportunity to go to the zoning board of appeals. Uh, once you have approved this as a subdivision. Ed is gonna walk you through it and there's just one thing I'll point it out. You may have noticed somewhere on the plans that. There had, uh, was an encroachment discovered during the due diligence process by uh, Ed and his team. Uh, in order to be good neighbors, uh, we worked an arrangement uh, with the abutter that we're actually gonna give them. Uh, that land because it was not necessary for the development of the property. So the uh, encroachment issue uh, is gone. So uh, Ed, if you take it from there. Sure. Um, Eddie Jacobs, PMP. Um, we did all the civil survey work out here at um. Bellevue Ave for uh, Eastern Ventures. So this is an existing parcel. Uh, parcel ID number one seven two dash five nine one contains sixty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty square feet. And that would encompass this area along Bellevue Ave, down here, along this line here, along here to the south. Then up Bridge Street here, back to the beginning. Um, we divided this as equally as we could. Each lot has uh, this lot has a hundred and thirty-two, a hundred and thirty-five point four two feet of frontage. This one has a hundred and thirty-five point four three feet of frontage. Lot one would contain thirty thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine square feet. Lot two would contain thirty-one thousand, sixty-two square feet. This area right here, that, this triangle shape. Um, this would, the idea of this would be to go around the existing patio. There's a retaining wall in this area and there's a gazebo up in this corner. We met with uh, Ms. Dos Reyes. Uh, we went to her house, very nice lady, and we told her what we would like to do. Um, to have this lotline go around this encroachment so that she wouldn't have to worry about it. She was very amenable to that, so that parcel will be going over to Ms. Dos Reyes. Um, at the close of, at the closing. Um, there's an existing shed right here and a couple of yard lights. That uh, Ms. Dos Reyes also put in here, well, her husband, their ex-husband, and um, we will be getting rid of those. As well. Um, there are some wetlands on the bottom, south side of this property. That's the green line down here. These were um. Flagged by Environmental Restoration Consulting. Um, back in two thousand and one when we did the two-lot subdivision off of Arthur Street. And we feel located those at that time. And we also created a. Drainage easement over this corner, the southwest corner of Lot One, did a little detail down here. There's an existing headwall right here and a drainage pipe to another headwall up here that. Takes on some water here, so we created an easement here to encompass that headwell and drainage pipe, just in case anything. Ever happened to it in the future. They would be able to get, you know, these, if it was backing up onto this lot, these people would be able to get on there and repair it. Um. That's pretty much it, I think. If you had any questions or concerns, I'd be uh, glad to answer them.
Board members?
No.
Uh, is this open to public?
Uh, if any members of the public would like to comment on this uh, project, please use the raise your hand icon and we will allow you to speak. Uh, and I don't see any hands going up.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve with standard conditions. Second.
Roll call, James.
Yes.
Matthew.
Yes.
ondo.
Yes.
Tony, yes. Uh, Marty.
Yes.
Marty, okay, got everybody.
Don't forget me, Tony.
No, no, glad you made it safe in and out for the fire alarm. Um, so now we have waivers, um. For lots one and two. Are we gonna do together or are we gonna do these individually?
Uh, these ones you'll want to do individually.
Okay, so the first one is frontage for lots one and two. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Marty.
Marty, muted.
Uh, roll call, Marty.
Also, let me just jump in, motion to do what?
To approve.
Just, just clarify, please, thank you.
Motion to approve, except, prove the waivers.
Yes, the answer is yes.
Okay, um, James.
Yes.
Matthew.
Yes.
Yolando.
Yes.
Tony, yes. Second one, is there a motion to approve? Um. Be new streets? What exactly is that?
Basically, that means that we're not building a street. Um. What we have done in this case though is we have extended the sidewalk here that's in front of two nineteen, all the way down. For the length of um, lots one and two, and we actually added a couple of street trees to each lot.
So. We're not building a new street, why do we have to float on this?
Because as part of the Form C subdivision process, that, that assumes that you're building a road. And we're not building the road, the road already exists, so we're asking for a waiver from that, it's just.
Okay, so uh, is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, mo- motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, Yolando.
Yes.
Matthew.
Yes.
Marty.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Tony, yes. And then the last one is for utilities, what I see they're using the existing utilities. Is there a motion to approve?
Madam Chairwoman, can we just get a clarification on that? That's what that means, is that we're just approving that they're using the existing utilities and not. Providing new ones?
Yes.
Yeah, what it means, Matthew, is um, City of Brockton for new roadways has um, a regulation. That all utilities have to be underground, electric and all that. But where the electric is above ground on Bellevue Ave, the, the uh, utility poles are. Right on our side of the street, we're just wait, asking for a waiver to run it underground and just connect the utilities from the utility pole right to the house.
Perfect. Thanks for the clarification. And motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call, James.
Yes.
ondo.
Yes.
Marty.
Yes.
Matthew.
Yes.
Tony, yes. All right, thank you. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Then before you guys run off, can we just, um, what do you guys want to do for your surety? Admit the lots for the surety, I would guess. Okay. Sounds good, thanks.
Thank you very much.
That's all I needed.
Right, then we have a discussion topic for.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, again, discussion topic for thirteen, ten thirty-six Ash Street, definitive subdivision, special conditions. And we have a memo here from Chike. Proposed design complies with standard intersection design standards for the City of Brockton for roads of similar width. Does this memo go with the discussion of before, Evan?
Yes, do you want me to, I, I can explain, um, explain this if you'd like.
Yeah.
So, uh, if you guys remember. Probably a couple, couple of meetings back, you approved a definitive subdivision on Ash Street. Or Ash Street Extension uh, off of West Chestnut. Uh, there was, this is the one that it was a private way, uh, and they were also. Uh, proposing to improve the road down to their subdivision. Uh, there was a lot of discussion amongst the board members about the intersection. At Ash Street and West Chestnut. And one of the conditions of approval that the board gave. Uh, during that was, um, I'll read it here, is the developer meets with DPW to determine the best course of action for the intersection design. And implementation. That was a approval condition by the board. Uh, the engineer of this project. Submitted this letter from the city engineer uh, to satisfy that condition. So, uh, I wanted to bring this to the board for the members to discuss. Uh, whether this was their intent and if what was submitted satisfies that condition or not. Uh, and if not, the board, and the board wanted something else, wh- what is that and what does the applicant have to do to satisfy that condition?
May I, um, may I interrupt it? I apologize. I. Uh, Attorney John McCloskey and I represent the applicant. Um. I.
Well, hold on, Attorney McCloskey, let, I want, I want to let the board members discuss first and then they'll allow, this is a discussion for the board members. And then.
All right, I just, we didn't get any notice, we didn't get any notice of this hearing, so.
That's because this is just a discussion for the board members. If the chair chooses to hear from them. They can, but it, it's really just for them to discuss. There's not gonna be anything voted on here at all. It's just basically for you guys to decide if you want that, to satisfy that, or if not, and for you guys to clarify amongst yourselves.
Madam Chair, if I could. I, I spoke with Evan today about this and Jim, you were, you were this, were the spearheaded this concern, so if, could you just address? Does this, that, does this satisfy what you were asking?
So, I made that uh, stipulation and then I saw this return on the zoning board of appeals. From those lots, they brought one forward. Um, and then that's when I realized what the, how, you know, what the DPW. Uh, that meeting, you know, resulted in. So, it was just a basic standard, it, then, you know, they're not. Building sidewalks out on West Chestnut. It's a very, it's as bare bones as you can get, in my opinion. My concern is, on the traffic commission side, five years ago, and Evan, I sent you this study, I'm surprised it wasn't sent to all the other members. But I, I could send it to you. Five years ago, it was recommended for a light, a full-blown light. Um, it, and from my email with the traffic commissioner, Captain Macaro, it's, you know. It, it says determination that things are. It says determination that things have probably only gotten worse. So I just, you know, for the sake of the board, this information. You know, is the standard, if we're opening this up, going to be good on an intersection that was recommended to be. You know, a set of lights five years ago. And, you know, I'm assuming the only thing holding that back is is the financing on a light, on a full-blown set of lights. So it's 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 really a safety concern and that's Marty, you know. You know, my point with with this, because once you open it up, it's going to get, it's going to get a bit busier. And, you know, just from that study, just so you folks know what the recommendation was.
Now, Jim, I I agree with you. So what's, what recourse do we have?
Well, I think that needs to be a meeting of the minds. I mean, what recourse do we have? I'm I'm not the the final say here. I'm just kind of raising some red flags. I just, you know, again, I it's, I don't mean to be unfair to a builder, but I mean, there was a school bus full of kids that involved in an accident. Last week or two weeks ago.
Right near the Kennedy School.
Exactly. And with with that proposal from their design. I don't believe you can make any crosswalks. You need a sidewalk to get. An RRFB beacon, you know, crosswalk to get to the school. So with their buildout, I don't think you can get a crosswalk.
Yeah, there's no sidewalk currently on that side of West.
On that side, yeah, so.
And and I think, Jim, you did mention that vehicles coming up on West Chestnut sometimes.
All the time.
On on Ash, they're kind of like going around each other.
I think if you don't have curbing going a little bit of a distance from that intersection, and it's just kind of a. A shootout, very, you know, a quarter turn, you know, as presented. You're probably going to get people airborne if they're doing that, because now you're lipping them up if they go out, you know, a little bit wider. It's, it needs to be a full, it just in my opinion, I just think for safety, but again. I don't know what the solution is, but I do see some some problems.
What are my thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I think like at least, the I thought I was hoping that bare minimum would be like at least a granite curb sidewalk. Built out where.
It is, but just not long enough, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
At least a landing, I think, would be nice, but I know that, you know. A larger intervention is definitely needed in that area.
I I really think, you know. I think we got to go back to the drawing board in terms of what our recommendation is from another standpoint. To, we need a significant improvement, maybe not a full-blown set of lights. But maybe a crosswalk with an R, with a, you know, rapidly flashing beacon. You know, I don't know, just a suggestion. So again. Tony, I think you're talking, but you're muted.
Attorney McCloskey, you don't have any.
Thank you. Thank you. I I just happened to cross this tonight. I was. In on the in the other matter, didn't have much, anything to say. But I I called my client regarding the subdivision that had been approved by the planning board. And and the appeal periods passed. I think you probably all know my client is a is a. Developer who works with a city who is more than happy to help and do the right thing. But at this point, subdivision's been approved, the appeal period's gone by. And the plan is ready to be recorded.
So can you?
Jim, Jim, Jim Tweedy will also know that last month, we came before the zoning board of appeals on an adjacent lot. And the Board of Appeals denied that. And quite frankly, I don't know whether. We're now in the back in the regrouping stage and. We are taking a look at the whole project as to, you know, what what's going to be the thing? The right thing to do, what's going to be economically appropriate. But all I can say is that at this point. And I, and I, I don't have a lot to say. I haven't had a chance to take a look at this. Is that the subdivision plan's been approved, so it is what it is. That being the case. Maybe there's, if we, if we do get to the point of developing out that subdivision. Maybe we come back and say, all right, is there something we can do to help the city? With your concerns, and I I hear what you're saying. I don't know anything about that accident. I. I don't know anything about that at all, but. All I can say is.
Mr. McCloskey, if I could just stop you there. Yes, please take back to your client that I think it's a good suggestion that came from James. By extending, was extending the curb and making a crosswalk somehow, add a crosswalk to this plan with the. Flashing crosswalk light.
An RRFB.
And we're not taking a vote on this, we're just asking that for public safety. And can you take that back to your client, please?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. All right, anything else, Evan?
And so like, so can I just clarify, if they do that and implement that into their plan, that will satisfy the condition that the board. Gave conditionally with the approval.
We will get back to Evan to talk about the details of that. I know my client will want to talk with you and then. See what would make this work.
Okay.
Okay, good.
All right, thank you, Attorney McCloskey.
Okay, I'm just, I just want the board's clarification.
Yes.
After we have this conversation, do you want me to put this back on? You guys can discuss it again? Okay, okay, so then, yeah, all.
Other board members feel we do?
Well, I guess.
Yeah, I do.
One, one point of concern would be what, what, what is, what does it take to actually build the proper buildout for that application? So, you know, the the beacon is nice, but there's a certain set of standards, I believe, you know, ADA compliant and all that. I think needs to be determined. So it it does lead to, you know. What exactly is going to be done?
Proved by the. Building Department, it has to meet standards.
Well, it just depends on which standard that's. Because he's going to, he's going to project that meets a standard, but it's the bare minimum. So it's, if you're, if you're required for an RRFB, it's another set of standards, if I'm not mistaken, Evan.
Yeah, it it could be, again, really, the point of this is just clarification. On what you as a board want to see, where you will be satisfied. That they satisfied that condition that you put on is all. So you either want to give them clear guidance. Of something, if you do this, then you're good, or if you're not sure yet and you want to discuss it again. I can work with them in the background a little bit and then bring whatever solution.
Yeah, well.
Back to the board for another discussion.
If you don't mind, I, I don't, hearing what we have to say, why don't we leave it to them to come back and present to us?
I agree with that, Jim.
Okay, all right, that's marching orders. Thank you. Any other business this evening, Evan?
That's it.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, James.
Yes.
Marty.
Yes.
Matthew.
Yes.
Londo.
Yes.
Tony, yes. All right, good night all. Thank you.
Attorney McCloskey, thank you.
Good night.
Night now.
Good night.